Like a big trip to the bright, to the bright lights though.
Yep. Well, you know, in one year, uh, one of the times I was chair, they said, look, we're already gonna do the residential factory one. It's all we've ever done. Why don't we just cut the thing short? And they did. And then we got in trouble. And if somebody turned us in or what?
All right, team, seven o'clock, so we're gonna get started. This is the November twenty fourth, twenty twenty meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty A, section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteenth, twenty twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. All meetings and hearings listed in the agenda will also be done so through remote participation. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with a right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.shrewsburyma.gov/coronavirus. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting may do so by visiting www.shrewsburymediaconnection.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. This meeting will include public comment. To listen and participate in this meeting, dial one six three six four nine five one five seven four and enter the PIN six zero three five nine one three zero eight pound. Please mute your device until the chair addresses the item for public comment. As a preliminary matter, this is Beth Cassavant, Chair. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. John LeBeau.
Present.
John Samia.
Present.
Morris DiPaolo.
Present.
James Kane.
Present.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kevin Mizikar.
Present.
Valerie Clemmie.
Present.
Christopher Reedy.
Present.
Bernard Cahill.
Present.
Kevin Esposito.
Present.
Anticipated speakers on the agenda, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Paul Gannon.
Present.
Martha Gatch. I can see that Martha is here. If you are on a phone, it's star six to unmute yourself. Frank Stella.
Here.
And Todd Broder. Perhaps Todd will join us a little bit later.
I'm sorry, Todd had a prior engagement.
Okay.
Unfortunately, he won't be able to make it.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
No problem.
This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty due to this current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by Google Meet as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, as the Chair, will introduce each board member or staff member who has a lead role for the particular item or guest speaker associated with this item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, we will go down the line of members first and then to staff members inviting each to provide comments or questions. I will then call upon members to offer a motion and then a second. Please hold until your name is called. Further, remember to mute and unmute your phone by pressing star six or mute your computer when you are not speaking as not to trigger your camera feed or background noise. For items with public comment or public hearings, after members have spoken, I will afford public comment as follows. I will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify names and addresses only. Once I have a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in collaborately with other members, please do so through the Chair taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote in this meeting will be conducted using a roll call vote. And that brings us to item number one on our agenda, which is to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion was made and seconded. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Item number two is to approve the minutes of the October thirteenth, twenty twenty workshop, the November tenth, twenty twenty meeting, and the November tenth, twenty twenty workshop.
Move approval.
Second.
Aye. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Item number three is announcements and reports. Does anyone have any announcements this evening?
Madam Chair.
Mr. LeBeau.
I have a little bit of an oddball announcement to make, but it's something that I've observed at my work and I thought I might share with the residents of Shrewsbury. Any Shrewsbury residents who, uh, normal practice is to have a living Christmas tree, whether you go to a cut-your-own place or you buy it at a local stand, there is unprecedented early demand. Expectation is Christmas trees are gonna run out very, very early this year. So anybody who likes to have a real Christmas tree, go get them soon.
Thank you.
This last, this last week, some people have done more business, the busiest days in decades of their entire season, and to have it happen before Thanksgiving is totally outrageous. So we anticipate very strong sales this year.
We're all just looking for something to divert our attention. I know that we've done some serious decorating around here. We've got pumpkins, turkeys, and trees all at the same time. I would like to just give a quick update on the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force. We've completed our third meeting and have now broken the committee into smaller working groups or subcommittees, and those subcommittees will be meeting for the first time on, um, this coming Monday night, November thirtieth. And I definitely want to thank Valerie Clemmie from the Board of Selectmen's office for all of her support in helping to navigate a way to, um, find subcommittees. I think there's seven or eight subcommittees to meet on their own separate, uh, Google Meet links with their own agendas, um, and their own dial-ins that are also, uh, open to the public to listen to. It was no small task to make this happen in a virtual setting. It was very challenging, and I appreciate her support in making that happen for us. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Kane.
If I could just bring one item to the attention of the board and ask the manager to follow it closely if the board agrees with me. Some number of months ago, the matter of whether or not this, uh, town would adopt legalized marijuana in retail and, uh, testing labs in grow facilities came to town meeting, and because of the parameters in place, town meeting took a certain vote. And whether we were in favor of that vote or against that vote, it was done within the full context of the information at hand and the statute in place. And recently, you may have read that the Cannabis Control Commission is considering a new license that would basically bypass the retail establishments in a community and allow for direct delivery from a grow facility. And that would basically change the parameters, um, for our town where we had two and people at town meeting knew they had, we had two licenses. And there was a full and open debate and people elected to welcome it to town. And I think it's in our interest to ask the manager to follow this closely because if the rule changes, in essence, we go from having two facilities to having absolutely no control, as I understand it and I read the various articles. So I would ask for the board's, um, agreement this evening to ask the manager to monitor this and to update us periodically. As I'm saying this, I, I hope I'm not putting our colleague in an odd spot. Uh, John, I, I'm sorry, I know you sit on an advisory council and I, I just can't see your head and I didn't think of it at the beginning here. I apologize. I, I think I've relayed this fairly and openly as to what's, uh, under consideration with the CCC. And again, whether anyone was for or against the town meeting vote, town meeting took action believing we had a certain number of licenses within town. I don't know if town meeting would have taken the same action if in essence there were, uh, unlimited number of licenses. So I would ask for that gesture this evening if my colleagues concur.
Uh, Mr. Kane, just to follow up, so just to make sure the public knows that we did as a board send a letter to the CCC regarding our concerns with the delivery. And then I did sign up to, um, participate in the public hearing that was held, I believe it was two weeks ago. So they, um, allowed for one hundred speakers and then one hundred people on the waiting list, and I was number one hundred on the waiting list. So I did not get to speak despite, um, trying and hanging in for a good six hours dialing back in and out of the meeting. So, um, I definitely hear your concerns and I, I, I'm also paying attention to it.
Thank you. Uh, what I was reading today in State House News Service indicates that they're going ahead with the rule next week and a variety of entities are planning a legal challenge to what appears to be clear language, at least when one person reads it. Um, and I think it would be in our interest to be ready to join, uh, if you will, a class action suit if others were to sign on with that primary, uh, complaint. I simply bring that, uh, as a next step to what the board has previously done and what you did in the past weeks as what I think is a next logical step and what could be a very important policy change.
Thank you. All right, then if we are all set, we can move on to item number four, which is the Town Managers' Report.
Good evening, everyone. I have two general items to update the board on, and then I will spend a couple of minutes on my COVID update as well this evening. First, um, wanted to thank the residents for their patience, um, and share the success, um, that we were able to get through roughly fifty percent of the town with our unidirectional flushing program over the last, uh, twelve months. So that was, um, certainly, we knew we were taking on a big challenge to, um, work through a lot of accumulated, uh, material within the system, mainly manganese that has accumulated over time. And, um, we have a great partner in Hydratech and great leadership, Dan Rowley, Jeff Highland on DPW to make sure we're, we're taking our time and doing everything right. And, um, we're very successful, uh, although we did not get through the whole town and it took us longer than we thought. We're doing a quality job in the field and we're making sure we get, uh, the sediment out of the system so we can move to a more maintenance pattern rather than catching up year after year, um, with the accumulation. And then the second matter is, um, Selectman Kane had asked at a previous meeting regarding the impact of COVID nineteen on our public safety calls. And, um, I received data which I will distribute to the board, um, with regards to, uh, calls over the, the relevant time period. And honestly, on the, um, fire and EMS side, um, we're about normal. Actually, total call volume is down a little bit over the prior year. And with police, although it's, it's hard, a little bit harder to track, um, one interesting but not encouraging statistic that, uh, the police chief has provided is that identity thefts are nearly quadruple what they were last year. So we can't necessarily tie that to COVID, but it's all, the only anomaly in the police data that we can see, and it is quite significant. And that's a, a change from about a hundred to four hundred over a relevant period. We certainly have seen a lot of that in fraudulent unemployment claims. And I know that is driving some of the numbers. And, uh, certainly, uh, many of us have experienced that and it's happening in the public sector, so, um, I guess, w- on that point, uh, we will be providing a more thorough update to the Board of Selectmen in the coming weeks. It's been very challenging, the way the state has billed us and their delay in billing us for unemployment so we can get through and, and provide you with an accurate number. We are buoyed by the CARES Act that we can use to help offset COVID unemployment-related claims, but, it is a good start of mine for this fiscal year that even though we doubled the amount of money from one hundred to two hundred thousand, we have enough. So I'll continue to update the board and if it's okay, I will just proceed into, uh, the COVID update.
Mr. Mizikar, can I just ask you one question before you do? On the unemployment, um, benefit claims, do you know how many that are coming through to us are fraudulent and how many are actually real?
I don't have total numbers. Um, I can certainly get that for you, but I would say disproportionate amount of, uh, the claims are fraudulent. And they're range from, you know, names of employees, um, that are still working to, um, the misuse of social security numbers, not tying to the right name, but, you know, not a, a public employee name. So, um, it's very hard to understand and track how they're getting sufficient amount of data to get into the system. And we're working to clean those up and not incur costs on the town side and ultimately get, uh, reimbursement from the state if we do process a claim and it, it goes through, so, um, we've been encouraged by the information that we're get, getting from our consultant and from the state, but it's just a tedious process. We're talking, oh, I don't know, ten or twenty times the amount of, uh, data and claims over a normal year.
Thank you. And I'm good with you going on to number five, your coronavirus report.
Thank you. Okay, uh, following, uh, the, what has become unfortunately traditional format for this update, I'm providing the board, uh, with an update since your previous meeting of November tenth. There have been one hundred and sixty cases since your prior meeting just fourteen days ago. We are now at seven hundred and twenty-two positive cases. With regards to, um, and the, the incidents over, um, the last fourteen days, excuse the, the twelve point seven nine number that got carried up incidentally, twenty point one according to the state per hundred thousand, we remain in the yellow status. We have a positivity rate that is nearing, uh, three percent, and the positivity rate again is just the number of positive tests in comparison to the total number of tests taken. We are reporting weekly, um, or every weekday, excuse me, um, and we will report, um, Thursday's numbers for Thanksgiving or Friday this week. Just in com- in comparison, uh, to the previous fourteen day gap between, uh, your, uh, last October meeting and your first November meeting, there were sixty-nine cases between, in that fourteen day period. And this fourteen day period, again, a hundred and sixty cases. The, uh, daily incidents per hundred thousand, um, on the prior state report was seven point one, and now it's twenty point one. With regards to deaths, uh, no new deaths have been indicated. However, we have, uh, looked at the data a little closer and I can report that the average age at the time of death for COVID indicated deaths is eighty-six. And the range of individuals who, um, the age of the individuals is from sixty-four years to a hundred and three years old at the time of death, COVID indicated. The status of town building and staffing is that, um, we are open to the public Wednesday, excuse me, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, uh, by appointment only. And you can make appointments with any, uh, town department which you have business. And we are remaining in a, a steady pattern with basically fifty percent staff on-site and off-site within the offices through, uh, the middle of January. And we are having our field workers, uh, work in cohorts, limiting their interaction with each other, where possible, uh, rather than mustering at a, uh, garage in the morning, uh, getting their assignment, uh, the prior day and going directly to work in the morning rather than, uh, coming together as a group. With regards to the positive case data, since the inception of our first case on March nineteenth, um, November, uh, is far and beyond the worst month that we've witnessed. Uh, again, this is only through the first twenty-four days. We've, we've experienced four, two hundred and fourteen new positive cases this month. Thirty percent of our cases have now come within the last twenty-four days. We're projecting nearly two hundred and seventy cases this month. By the time we make it through the next six days, uh, if you look at November, uh, based upon that projection, um, if we were to continue at that daily rate, November would be a hundred and eighty-one percent greater than April. So April certainly, uh, felt different, I still think, than, than we feel now with the implications and, and the concerns that the public has uh, over COVID nineteen. But we're, we're approaching, uh, nearly double the amount of cases that we saw during, uh, what was called the surge in the spring. So seven hundred and twenty-two reported cases. Those break down over incremental days. We continue to see a higher incidence, uh, more recent, uh, than the longer-term pattern. That is, we've seen a hundred and sixty cases, uh, in the last fourteen days, two hundred and thirty-three cases in the previous thirty days, and three hundred and ninety-two cases over the last six to years. So again, our fourteen-day, uh, daily average exceeds both the thirty and sixty-day daily average. Almost twenty, over twenty-two percent of our cases have occurred within the last fourteen days. Where's, board members, this is the first time I'm sharing, uh, this with you at this meeting, although as you can see, we've been tracking, uh, graphically the daily incidents of COVID nineteen since the beginning. And the reason that I'm sharing it with you now is because, I, you know, would, first of all, just ask that you disregard the thirty-seven cases in, in the middle of April as it was, uh, were much better reporting, much more consistent reporting, and there was a backlog, uh, that we reported at that time. And that daily number was really only ten, and then twenty-seven of those cases were spread over the previous days, but we don't know which days exactly, so. But again, in comparison to what we were thinking in the spring and we were calling it the surge and flattening the curve, you can see it's a little bump, uh, on the graph now in comparison to where we are in, in the trajectory that we're climbing. I'm happy to say that just, you know, a few days ago, that, uh, trend there, that trend, you know, in the eighteen and twenty-one can, you know, cases in consecutive days looked nearly vertical. And time has allowed it to, to ease a little bit, but we're certainly still going up. Um, as Dr. Hirsch told us in a meeting last Friday, the viral load in the community is such that cases will continue to rise. And it's, you know, uh, kind of a self-fulfilling thing because of how much viral load there is. The cases will continue to rise and be very difficult to, to change the trend, although we will. So finally, looking at the, uh, positive, uh, case age analysis, we continue to see unprecedented growth in the zero to nineteen-year-old range. We have grown, uh, from early September through, uh, the state's final or, or last week's report, uh, three hundred and fifteen percent, uh, during that timeframe, uh, sixty-three additional cases versus the twenty that we had on September second. By number, the highest growing category is the thirty to thirty-nine. There are sixty-four new cases in that, uh, cohort. And unfortunately, uh, for the first time, we're seeing, um, more significant growth in the greater than seventy. Previous reporting periods, we were seeing one or two cases and, and this one we're seeing nine. So that's not a good trend. Again, as the viral load within the community grows, it'll be harder and harder for everyone to per- prevent themselves from getting the virus. So, wh- what can we really do about this? So, um, I was a part of a seminar with, uh, many Massachusetts municipal managers last week, and we heard from, uh, former Homeland Security expert, uh, Juliette Kayenn. And, um, she told us three things that we should really be thinking about, uh, three M's, as she put it. Minimize contact intensity. And an example of that is picking up, uh, food when you wanna, uh, you know, have someone else cook for you rather than dining in. So we're not talking about stopping activities completely. We're just thinking about how we're, um, going about our business. Manage the number of contacts that you have in your own life. Live in, you know, small groups. Uh, it's not about familiarity. It's about the number of people that you expose yourself to. And the lower that number is, the, uh, less chance you'll have to become exposed to the virus. And then practice your own and implement general mitigation policies. Simply wearing a mask, uh, keeping social distance, washing your hands. So those three M's, I think, is, is very important for folks to think about. And then she really encouraged us to also start talking about what we know. Certainly, the, the, the storm before the calm. We are in the fall surge that we worried about in the spring, and it's, it's much worse in the spring. Uh, it will end. We are diligently working and listening to the, the reports from public sources and private sources about, uh, the vaccine. We've already undertaken, uh, very recent planning efforts and, and what we will do to help distribute the vaccine to the general population. We know that the vaccine will not be distributed by population alone. It will be, um, tailored to, um, those working in the medical industry, and those at very high risk, and then it'll eventually make it to those considered general population with much lower risk. And the town will stand ready, uh, in all phases to help distribute the vaccine, uh, very rapidly with our partners, not only at Worcester Public Health, but also with the Medical Reserve Corps. And other volunteers will be needed, um, to help us with this, uh, massive endeavor. And then one of the biggest, uh, fears that, um, we have is that public confidence has been eroded and that individuals won't take the vaccine. We heard this evening that Dr. Fauci is clearly stating that he's gonna take the vaccine, and he'll recommend that his family does. And I, um, you know, kinda laugh, you know, why would the town manager put this on a slide? Because it's really important. We have to know that there's appropriate protocols at the federal level and with these private companies that the vaccine will be safe. And in order for us to get back to, quote, more of a normal life, we're gonna have to ensure that the vaccine is widely adopted and spread and, and we'll have to convince individuals that it's safe to do so. So it's important for us to talk about not only what we're doing, but what we plan to do. So, um, I appreciate the opportunity to, again, uh, share the information that we have, and I'd be happy to take any questions of, of the board.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Samia.
Um, it's for you to Kevin. Kevin, just as we're a month away from the expiration of CARES Act funding eligibility, are we seeing, uh, understanding that, that there's just not enough time to exhaust all the funding, but do we see any challenges with the funding? We're trying to expend with, uh, everyone else doing the same thing as we come closer to the end?
Honestly, no, we don't have challenges in acquiring things. Uh, I think we have sufficient stock, um, on PPE and supplies and materials as much as we can honestly store. Uh, we've actually bought storage devices to be able to store more things. We are now moving into ensuring that we, you know, are very detailed and thorough in, uh, calculating that unemployment number that we can use for CARES Act. Calculating employees' leave that may have been taken related to COVID that we maybe haven't charged back now and really trying to narrow that amount of money that we turn back, um, since it all benefits and preserves additional funds going forward, which there are not much of at, at this point, to be honest with you.
Okay, thank you. And then just one comment, with the surge being even worse than the spring, the economic impact, we'll need to watch closely as well with Schedule A receipts. Given the first quarter, we saw year-over-year slight increase, but we may see a longer period of, of reduced revenues that we'll have to watch every month. So thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, well then we can move on to item number six, which is to resume the tax classification public hearing that was continued from November tenth, twenty twenty, and a joint meeting with the Board of Assessors. The Board of Selectmen will review and take action, uh, upon the conclusion of the public hearing relative to the adoption of the FY twenty twenty-one tax rate for all property classifications within the town of Shrewsbury. So I'm welcoming you, Chris Reedy, and who do you have with you this evening?
Uh, Frank Stella.
Okay, welcome, Mr. Stella. Okay, welcome, Mr. Stella.
Okay, thank you. It was a non-typical year, to have to say that to start with. It was a revaluation year, which has been bumped out from three years to five years. Uh so they spend a little more time going through it, and I apologize for the delay. What we had done after studying sales at the beginning of the year through really uh May and June, we saw the values were staying the same or being slightly lower. So what we did is we decided to keep values flat or lower them slightly. What this changed overall was the ratio, sales ratio of ninety-five percent, which is assessed value divided by the sales prices. This seemed to cause some problems or questions with the Department of Revenue final review. We gotta clear it up, I guess that's the best way to put it. So um to get into the presentation, which I I would hope all of you had a chance at least to have, is that we're looking at a change in the tax rate, which increased from twelve forty-seven to thirteen nineteen, mostly due to changes, you know, with the override. Some budgetary factors also figured into that. The excess capacity, which is also a thing that you will vote and approve on tonight, is forty-six thousand four hundred dollars. The way this is calculated is an algorithm which the Department of Revenue keeps confidential. It doesn't move in a straight line in adjusting other parts of the tax rate and recapitulation data. So it's notched, and it was either forty-six thousand plus or minus eight thousand dollars. Those were the two change options there. So that's one reason why it's high. The new growth this year was eight thousand fifty-eight thousand dollars. And a large part of that was due to growth in personal property. Single-family house values have still continued to increase, construction has not been that strong as far as numbers, prices are higher. The strongest part of residential growth was um condominiums. And there's, as we're aware of, the uh nine thirty-five Main Street, the Wyman Drive, those are twenty-six new units that are coming online. Three of them came on prior to the end of the fiscal year, the rest of them will be coming on this uh following year. Three, uh five seventy-nine Lake Street is another condominium project, and that's coming online, the first sale occurred in August, and it will continue through the course of the year. The builder says that they have them all um under agreement, so that that's good. Those prices are more affordable, they're in the four hundreds, mid to high four hundred thousand dollars. Supposed to the typical um duplex condos we've seen in the six hundred thousand dollar range, six hundred, six fifty, close to seven hundred thousand dollars. So that's, it doesn't hit the definition of affordable, but it is progress and helps. The purpose of this meeting is to decide also whether or not to shift um any of the tax burden in the different classes. And there is three options. The fourth option had been open space, uh the state has, the Department of Revenue has said that open space as a classification was changed just to backland, so therefore, there's not that fourth option that there have been in the past. Is in previous years, the uh, you know, assessors recommending a factor of one, which means a single tax rate for the whole town. Here we go, as to most common earlier, it's this, I wish I could stop there, but I can't. So the um tax rate increase was five point seven seven percent, prior year was point eight percent downwards. The percentage of the shift, which is, you know, combination of residential value versus commercial and industrial value would have been ninety-two point seven percent, meaning that additionally eight percent could be moved to the commercial and industrial section. There is small, uh residential, the other exemptions, one is the residential, which is allows you to shift the burden in the residential valuation group among the lower priced houses to the higher priced houses. How this works, it is really designated a most effective in resort communities, the properties of the Cape, um on the South Shore and the North Shore. What it allows is people that have second homes, which is really the definitive factor. They would generally pay a higher burden of the taxes than the people that live in the town that have values below, you know, an average. Shrewsbury has very few second homes, I imagine there are a few along Lake Quinsigaman. So this makes it essentially not really a factor and not useful, you know, for our use. The second change is the commercial exemption. And what this is, is properties are that are under a million dollars for commercial properties only can get a tax break. What the qualifications the state has is in addition to being under a million dollars, they have to have um a certain number of employees, and um that's the basis of it. Uh the State Department of Revenue does not recommend this factor. As it's difficult to administer, and the examples I've given in the past is, you'd have a Bank of America building. That's obviously is part of a huge organization, but uh the property's under a hu- million dollars in value. And they have the requisite number of employees, they would get the benefit, that benefit would go to the Bank of America and not stay in the community. The last option is the commercial industrial shift, which you see more in the cities than anywhere else. This would allow um them to pick up more of the burden of the residential sector. Our board does not support this uh essentially for the reason is that by increasing the taxes on commercial and industrial properties, it shifts the, it lowers the value in doing a, just a basic calculation that you have your income, you deduct your expenses, and then with the flat rate, you take off the real estate taxes. With the shift, the amount that they would deduct for real estate taxes would be more, which would reduce the net operating income, which would reduce the value of the property. And eventually gets to the point where those properties are valued lower, and it's shifted back to the residential sector. It also can be detrimental to businesses. We're seeing that in some of the old, on the urban cities, uh where their tax rates in the thirties and higher. So that's the basics of the presentation. Uh would there be any questions?
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Reedy. Board members, any questions?
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Kane.
Chris, could you talk to the rising values in multifamily? Every year I ask you this series of questions, because for the past several years, the uh price paid per door through acquisition seemingly goes up ten, fifteen, twenty percent. And I know a couple of years ago, when an Avalon property traded in town, my recollection was the price per door was in excess of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars per front door. What are you seeing out there now, and are you still comfortable that we're capturing the true value for taxable uh value in our town?
Yes, what we have done is that obviously we track the sales, um Madison Place sold, um they sold. The contract price was two hundred and fifty thousand a door, uh however, there was a tax exchanged involved in that. The sellers had um uh office building in Boston that they had a price, I think was a factor of twenty, above what they had paid for it. So that we we talked to the aunt, to the buyer, they gave us the information, and we talked to the seller, and he gave us also information on it. And that came out around two twenty to eighteen a unit. We have been raising the values on a per unit per door basis. What we did this year, when we kept, we anticipated commercial industrial going down, what we did is we took the um rents um at the end of the year, December, we, you know, called around, did a survey, what looked online, and then checked it again in July, and the asking prices in July were five percent higher than they had been in January. And other research and articles uh have shown that that market, while there hasn't been much activity, is they have also prices have gone up in general, vacancies except for the urban cores have been steady. So surprisingly, that that sector of the market is very strong.
And remind me, because it's been a few years since I was on that board with you, uh the numbers you're looking at now are actually older by a year or two, if I recall. As you're setting a tax rate next year, it's actually based on old data, correct?
Based on twenty nineteen sales.
What did you see out there that made you think the com- uh commercial industrial values were going to drop?
The one advantage to having this uh lagging, um you know, value setting is that you can look at the first three, six months of the year and see where the market's headed. If the market's going down, you try to at least stay with it or a little bit of ahead of it. So then the following year, the abatements um are high, and it also has more of an impact on the overlay. So that that's essentially the process that we go through on this. Commercial and industrial, there, you know, from everything we can see, you know, retail is gonna be hurt, White City, the inline stores, um not quite half of that space is vacant, the rest of it is occupied.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone here from the public wishing to be heard? Remember, if you're on a phone, it's star six to unmute yourself. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone, and when I look at the list of participants in the meeting, I recognize pretty much everyone on the list. So I'm gonna just assume that there is no one here from the public that would like to speak about the tax classification. Okay, so that brings us back to closing the hearing.
Madam Chairman, I move to close the hearing.
Second.
Good, a motion to close the hearing, Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, the meaning, the hearing is closed, board members, uh thoughts on the classification?
Madam Chair.
Mr. LeBeau.
Unless uh members of the board want to go into deeper discussion, I'm more than willing to make a motion at this time. Uh I move the Board to select the residential factor of one and not adopt the CIP shift or any exemptions.
Second.
Hey, any further discussion? Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Mr. Reedy, thank you very much for your time this evening and for your presentation.
You're welcome. I will need to touch base with you to get a final signature. Department of Revenue changed the procedure where all the board members don't need to sign, but the um chair, or chair woman of the board need to.
And that needs to be an actual signature, or like, I can always come down to the town hall and sign that, that's no problem.
Do you have access to Gateway?
Um we use DocuSign.
Okay, no, you don't.
I'm sure Valerie can figure it out, and then let me know what I need to do to get that signed for you, no problem at all.
Absolutely fine, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
You too, bye.
Okay, that brings us to item number seven, which is a seven ten PM joint meeting with the Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee to present the Open Space and Recreation Plan for the Board of Selectmen Approval for submission to the Massachusetts State Department of Conservation Services. And so I know that Bernie Cahill is here with us and members of the Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee. Uh so Bernie, uh I'll turn it over to you.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. Um with me tonight is Martha Gatch and uh Paul Gannon are both here. They're on the committee, and also from the town staff is Kevin Esposito uh for Parks and Recreation. There was, Prashanth was on earlier, but I think he got off, so it is just me, Mimi couldn't make it tonight. I'm gonna keep this as brief as I can. Um as you know, we met two weeks ago to discuss the OSRP draft. We received your comments from the last meeting, and went back to address them, and they're outlined in the memo you received dated November nineteenth. So um pretty much I'm here um open-ended to say, um if there is anything you want me to walk through with you or to discuss um about that memo and the changes that were made, I'm happy to do so. Um otherwise, I will hand it back over to you.
Okay, so looking at the memo, I see that um the changes as outlined uh were made to address the concerns of the board. Board members, do we have any further questions for Mr. Cahill or for members of the Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee?
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Kane.
I do not, thank you very much for the clear memo, Bernie, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, your memo did the, did the trick, it answered all of our questions before we had a chance to ask anything in person. Thank you for that. So you need us to um act on this, correct?
Yeah, to approve it, yep.
All right, so I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, no further discussion. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you very much to you and your team for going back through and addressing our concerns, much appreciated.
Absolutely, thank you, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you as well.
All right, take care.
Okay, that brings us to financial business. Item number eight is to review and act on the financial policies. Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um we started several years ago in two thousand and eighteen with a little bit of a different approach with regards to uh the policies and objectives of the board, and we attempted to set, and I think we have set uh financial policies which are much uh longer term and and uh multi-year. Uh but we do like to take the opportunity to review those annually and make sure that there aren't any changes that we see necessary to help, one, preserve our financial position and ensure we have the ability to maintain our bond rating. Uh this year, uh again, upon thorough review of that document, I don't see a specific need to make any any changes on the financial policies themselves. I would entertain any questions of the board. And if there are none, just ask for your affirmation of those existing policies, uh with a note that I have made some typographical changes that the chair had uh identified in the document.
Board members, any questions or discussion on this document?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Samia.
Um just the, on the financial policies, it's just more of an informational type question going forward, just looking at stabilization generally, and we've talked a lot historically about having a vibrant stabilization fund and what it would mean in terms of bond rating and the like, it'd be helpful to understand, given the reason behind having a stabilization fund, a little more information about what pulling or what amounts pulling from that stabilization fund would mean for future bond ratings, so if the things post twelve thirty end up being really catastrophic, the state cuts funding, uh Schedule A receipts goes down, it'd be helpful sometime in a future meeting to understand what the interplay is, um put dollars to it. We, I think we all know conceptually, but what that would mean in practice. Just in case we actually would have to pull from the rainy day fund like the state looks like it has had to do and could do going forward, if we could just get a little more granularity on what that means. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then I will take a motion. You're muted still, Mr. LeBeau.
Move we adopt.
Second.
Great, any further discussion? Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Item number nine is to review and act on the FY twenty-two financial objectives.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair. Um provide a couple comments um to the objectives for fiscal year twenty-two and just note for those watching that these objectives really are step one with the uh fiscal year twenty-two just note for those watching that these objectives really are step one with the, uh, fiscal year twenty-two budget process and, uh, allows clear guidance from the Board of Selectmen to staff on how we should approach the budget process um, outside of any other overarching policies or practices that we have. So obviously, we've added this year some notes about the, uh, both near and long-term impacts of uh, COVID nineteen in the introduction. Citing their certainty and just making sure, uh, for history, folks can understand what was going on at the time, uh, with regards to the finances. And then moving into some of the actual changes that we're, uh, recommending. First and foremost, we know that fiscal year twenty-one, the current year that we're in, was quite challenging, uh, even in February, uh, before COVID. And, and then we ended up stripping out, uh, almost two million dollars in revenue from the model that we started with last year. And, uh, the only way we were able to move forward with the budget process for fiscal year twenty-one without catastrophic uh, service reductions on both the town and school side was to introduce um, over eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars in one-time revenue from free cash to, uh, kind of balance out or mi- mitigate the damage that was occurring within the budget document and, or within the budget in, in town operations. So, obviously, uh, as we talked about, uh, the challenges that we're currently facing still here on November twenty-fourth with regards to the virus. We don't see any changes and as Mr. Samia and others have commented this evening, that, you know, the financial impact, uh, may be quite longer for us here in Shrewsbury than, uh, we would have ever thought it would have been in the spring, uh, with the numbers where they are. So one of the first changes, um, that I'm recommending, which, um, is a little tough to do, to be quite honest, because it has a significant change to the board's approach and thoughts uh, when it comes to pension funding. And, um, unfortunately, I don't see any other way to have um, an initial look at the finances for twenty-two without, you know, seven-digit, um, deficits is to reduce the amount of money that we are contributing to the pension system despite not being fully funded. Now, there's still a rolled up banner in my closet, uh, that has a lot of people's signatures, including many on this meeting, said twenty twenty-two or bust, and that was a serious commitment of this town. And, um, I'm asking for the board's consideration to walk slightly away from that and extend the horizon on the pension funding out through twenty twenty-four. Um, so, um, three additional cycles, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, until we achieve full funding. Again, the only reason that I do this is because my preliminary look at a financial forecast uh, is such that if we don't make changes, uh, by reducing the pension funding by almost, uh, one point, uh, five million dollars, we will not have the opportunity to, um, pass a balanced budget without significant impacts uh, to town and school operations. So that's one of the first primary changes, uh, is, is reducing the amount of funding for the pension system, uh, to three million, three hundred thousand for this, uh, funding cycle and next. Most of the rest of the updates within the first section, section A of the policies, uh, is related to that overarching change. Um, and then just updating, you know, figures with regards to the landfill revenue to be more accurate, uh, where, where we are recently. I also made some tweaks within the OPEB funding, utilizing marijuana excise tax and noted that we now have two retailers open and operating in the community. And, um, putting a note in there that, uh, as we have, or once we finally have the data to make, um, concrete projections for marijuana revenues, uh, the consideration is still given to them for OPEB purposes if that's, uh, possible, given the other financial constraints that we have. And, uh, there's commentary, uh, within section B, uh, and an objective to work closely with the school department to develop, uh, the appropriate expense plan for the operation of the new facility, uh, Beal, which, uh, this is largely a carryover, but even more critical uh, of an objective as we look at the year that Beal, um, used to open. And then finally, a new section relative to, um, extraordinary expenses related to COVID nineteen, seeking and utilizing, uh, ex- external sources of funding to the greatest extent possible. We've obviously had great success and limited impact on the general operating budget because of federal stimulus dollars. And I don't see any way that we will be able to have a sustainable budget environment for the rest of fiscal year twenty-one. And then into twenty-two, if we don't have some type of, uh, federal stimulus funding to help us manage uh, those extraordinary costs, um, on the town side. Whether it's the unemployment that we talked about or, or altered operations for public buildings and so many other aspects of the town. So those are, uh, the main points, uh, that I wanted to, to talk about, and I'm happy to have a discussion with the board about, uh, these, uh, objectives for fiscal year twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Questions, comments from the board?
Madam Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. LeBeau.
Um, I would just like to talk a little bit more, uh, about the manager's proposal relative to the retirement. Selectman DiPaolo and I were, uh, back at the, uh, original concept of, uh, twenty twenty-two a bust. And though we contemplated, uh, many things that might, uh, get in our way, I confess, we never thought about a global pandemic. It was never our intention of the, the term bust in twenty twenty-two a bust was not to convey that we would solve the retirement problem and at the same time break the back of the town's budget. So I think this is the prudent thing to do. I think it's the right thing to do. And I'm entirely supportive of, of the manager's recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Samia, it's like you're looking to unmute.
Yeah, um, I agree with Mr. Selectman LeBeau on that. Just one other thought to the financial objectives as I was looking through them. One other thing for, for my colleagues' consideration as well as, uh, to Kevin. The, the only other goal or sort of financial objective I was thinking for twenty-two, given that we adopted goals on August eleventh, twenty twenty, um, that, um, really resources be allocated in a manner most consistent with achieving the goal set forth in the board's goals on August eleventh, uh, twenty twenty. That can be fourth, but the idea is more of a guiding principle. I know we're getting pretty granular when it comes to whether Beal funding or, uh, pension funding or COVID, uh, but also to me, this is a guiding principle generally, and all of these flow through that because given the organizational-wide goals that were adopted, as well as the goals adopted by the town manager and throughout the organization. Well, that was for this fiscal year, the overall goals that we adopted back in August were for twenty-one and beyond. So that would be one concept that also has to be included in the fiscal policies. Thank you, and the objectives, thank you.
Hey, anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Um, I just, of course, would like to, um, agree with, uh, Mr. LeBeau. Um, it, uh, twenty twenty-two is always the number, but, um, we also knew that there could be realities that would, that would affect that. And, and I think we've done an incredible job of, of even getting to this point, um, without having to make an adjustment. So, this certainly is an extraordinary time and I, and I think, um, that, uh, it is appropriate to make that adjustment this year. Um, I would just, um, I, I just want to be clear with Mr. Samia is asking, are you, uh, Ms., if I may, Mr. Samia, are you asking to add in? The August information as guiding principles in this document?
Yes. Yep. It's a framework.
I just, I would just like to review them again to make sure that nothing's changed in the past four months, but I don't think they did, but, it, I, I think it could be appropriate, um, if, if, uh, I don't know if you were looking for a vote on that tonight or, um, you had a chance to review and we could vote on that at the next meeting as an addendum to this.
Mr. DiPaolo, if I could just jump in. Mr. Mizikar and I were discussing reviewing and sending those goals from August and also um, in a document, including the manager's goals back out to the board for review and having that on the meeting, um, our first meeting in December, I think it's the eighth. Um, so if that would work, we could, once we're finished with comments and discussions, uh, act on the FY twenty-two financial objectives and then talk about that other document at our meeting on this December eighth. Mr. Samia, what were you thinking that we would hold on this until it's put all together?
Uh, Madam Chair, yes, if possible. Um, sorry for the late suggestion here, just as I was going through it and thinking through it again and looking at the suggestions here. I took a look at the goals that were adopted, as well as the goals that have been adopted, adopted by the town manager and below, and just thinking that through over the course of the last couple of days, thought it would be appropriate to include in this document. So if possible, I'd ask that we can take it up at our next meeting. And it would be a nice segue into the other discussions on, uh, town manager and departmental calls if possible. Thank you.
Mr. Mizikar, how does this, oh, so go ahead, Mr. DiPaolo.
Yeah, I think you're going to ask the question I was going to ask, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Mizikar, I was going to ask you, if we hold on approving or acting on these objectives this evening, how does that impact your ability to move forward with your budget planning for FY twenty-two?
Um, I think it's very minimal. I'm getting a sense of the board, uh, on the primary change with regards to pension, that there's understanding and acknowledgement of the situation that we're in. Um, and that there's, doesn't seem to be objective, objections to anything else within the document. So it's, uh, uh, ability to get forward. Know that I'm moving forward in the right direction with the preliminary review of the revenues for the revenue manual. Uh, we don't issue bud- budget guidance to departments this year until, uh, the week after Christmas, so, uh, it will be not that impactful and I think we're headed in the right direction.
Okay, great. Any other comments from the board yet? Mr. Kane.
Just a quick question. Um, Kevin, I, I, if I'm understanding what you have been seeking to achieve, uh, in line with the board is a a degree of nimbleness. Don't make any final decision until the period at which time you have to make it, but prepare for every reasonable negative impact. The flip side could be what if come the end of January, there is a, a significant, uh, federal intervention and there is a considerable amount of aid. There's nothing saying we can't go back after a thorough review and put further emphasis on certain accounts, including the retirement, that this evening was, we're, we're agreeing because of the nature of the challenge, at this point, we're willing to step back from our original, original goal. There's nothing saying that if, if, if things turn out much better than anyone who could have ever reasoned that we can't stick to this or a similar objective, correct?
I absolutely agree with that, yes. I mean, we're.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep.
Mr. LeBeau, did you want to add a comment?
Well, I want to, first of all, I want to thank Selectman Kane for making, raising that point, and I think that's a very important point to raise. And I realize I failed to mention one thing when speaking about the retirement, that we push it off to fiscal twenty-five does not put us like at the back of the pack. Very few, uh, entities are going to have the retirements fully funded by fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, or twenty-five. So, um, I just don't want to give the, in, anyone an incorrect impression that this is a, uh, you know, a huge negative. Many, many communities would be, uh, delighted to be in the position that we're in right now relative to retirement. So I just wanted to make that clarification and thank Mr. Kane for his point. Thank you.
I echo what you're saying, Mr. LeBeau. Um, it's almost like we have a forced savings that other communities don't have because we were so aggressive and so committed to funding the pension um, year over year, that now we have this lever that we can pull in a time when we find ourselves with really few options, especially as we are facing great uncertainty in what the federal government will provide as far as assistance for the community or for the state. Um, I think that there are times when as a governing body, we have to decide that it's time to step back a bit from what is a priority and priority shift. Uh, there's nothing like a pandemic to show us that we need to allow town operations to continue. That is of utmost importance is maintaining the services that we're able to provide to residents. Um, I have one question for you, Mr. Mizikar. Will there be any penalties for walking back on our commitment to funding the retirement at the level that we've been funding it for the past years?
No, um, yeah, I, there will not be penalties or, you know, no significant concern. And just to put some numbers with Mr. LeBeau's comments, you know, we are in line to be the fourth funded pension system in the state and um, I think these changes, um, are going to be widespread and I would be surprised if we still don't achieve that designation out of the three hundred and fifty-one, uh, communities. So, uh, there won't be harm.
Thank you. Okay, so if there's no other comments or questions, um, we will move this to the December, first meeting in December. And a new document will be circulated to the board that will include the framework of the goals that were adopted on August eleventh. That brings us to item number ten on the agenda, which is to review the memorandum dated November nineteenth, twenty twenty, from Jeffrey Howland, Director of Public Works, and act on the list of private ways that snow and ice control services will be provided to pursue it to, uh, Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section six, C. So we do have a list of those, those streets in our packet and just for full disclosure, uh, I live on Clearview Road, which is one of those private streets that gets plowed. So, Mr. Howland, did you want to add anything? I know that you're with us this evening.
No, this is a, a yearly memo that comes from, it used to be from the Highway Superintendent, now it comes from the DPW. Uh, the only one, and it was a question from, um, that we had on Nelson Point Road, which is still remains on the list. Uh, Nelson Point Road, we accepted at town meeting a portion of it from South Quincy down to Point Road, but from Point Road West remains private. Uh, and that is the same, uh, memo as we have sent in the past.
Okay. Any questions from the board? I'm not seeing any, I'll take, um, doesn't say that we need to act. Do we need to vote on this, Mr. Mizikar? Yes, okay, so I will take a motion.
Move approval of the document as drafted, of the recommendations in the document as drafted.
Second.
Okay, the motions are made and seconded. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Item number eleven is to review and act on the winter maintenance of unaccepted subdivision streets to be plowed by developers pursuant to Board of Selectmen Policy Number sixteen. And there is a list in our packets as well. Mr. Howland, did you have anything that you wanted to add on this list?
Uh, no, uh, these are, again, standard ones that are under subdivision control.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions from the board? I'll take a motion.
Move approval to, uh, as the document suggests.
Second.
Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Item number twelve is to review and act to initiate the implementation of all matters required related to the Community Preservation Act as adopted by question four of the November third, twenty twenty special town election. Mr. Mizikar, could you provide a little background on this item, please?
Yeah, so, um, there's, um, I think, uh, rather significant effort ahead of staff in order to, um, call through the various approaches that we can take to make the community preservation uh, funding, uh, successful and meaningful to the community. And I'm just looking for the board's direction on, uh, proceeding, uh, in that manner, uh, with an eye to the spring town meeting, annual town meeting in May where, um, the spring town meeting, annual town meeting in May, where we would enable you to recommend a general bylaw. And I see a lot of interaction between that bylaw and other conversations this board has had about open space and affordable housing and things like that. So just wanted to kind of touch base with the board on this and get your thoughts on us moving forward in that manner.
Great, thank you. Board members, comments for Mr. Mizikar or thoughts on this item?
Madam Chairman?
Mr. DiPaolo?
First, I think it's a good idea for staff to start looking at this and see what else is out there, so that this is something we're not dealing with at the last minute. It's going to come quicker than we think. But I do, I guess I have a question, comment for, for Mr. Mizikar. I've been thinking about the Affordable Housing Trust and how it would relate to the Community Preservation Act. And I know it's early in this, in this process of getting the CPA up and running, but the affordable, the trust fund for the Affordable Housing Trust does not necessarily have to tie directly into something that the CPA committee would administer. As a matter of fact, wouldn't the, the, the trust, the trust itself, whatever that comes out to be at some point, would still have to vote that money out of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, even if it was going to be paired up with the Community Preservation Act?
Yes, yeah, I would see it as just almost the opposite of at least your, your early comments in that the Affordable Housing Trust, if, you know, that group would be kind of applying to and requesting the use of CPA funds designated for affordable housing to combine with the treasury that we already have for affordable housing. So it would be the Affordable Housing Trust seeking more money for affordable housing purposes and co-mingling it with, with that other, those other funds and controlling it that way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'm also in favor of starting to take a look, for the town staff to start taking a look at what needs to be done in order to implement the Community Preservation Act. So I'm seeing some nodding. Mr. Kane?
Kevin, what type of schedule do you have with this so that we have ample time to review it and think about it and perhaps give public comment prior to a town meeting? What's your current thinking, or if you don't have it this evening, could you report at the next meeting?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. My, my current thought is that we would have a bylaw, a draft bylaw and some related documents to you by the beginning of March. And that would give us about 75 days or so to go through whatever processes that we need to, and about six weeks or so prior to signing the word.
Okay. You don't believe in options memo? Who has to get better direction would be helpful in the middle, or are you comfortable with?
Oh, no, no, no. Yeah, I agree with you, yep. Yeah, I mean, but as far as having everything lined up for the, maybe I keyed in on your public feedback part of it too much, but I would think that we would be in lockstep throughout the process with more public documents by the beginning of March.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, very good. Motion?
I move we take the actions relative to implementing the Community Preservation Act.
Second.
Hey, Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Brings us to correspondence. Item number 13 is an email dated November 13th, 2020 from Joanne M. Graziano, Chief Bureau of Local Assessment, Department of Revenue regarding our notification of final certification. Item number 14 is a letter dated November 16th, 2020 from Christopher G. Mena, Town Moderator, regarding the 2021 Annual Town Election. I want to thank Chris, and I'm wondering if that is actually not correct, because this is actually his letter informing us that he is not going to be running for reelection as moderator in May 2021. So I would like to thank Christopher Mena for serving as the moderator for the past 12 years. I think that he picked the perfect time to give up his post, considering he can end on a high note of taking us through not just annual town meeting, but also special town meeting during a pandemic. So definitely grateful for all of his service. And item number 15 is a letter dated November 17th, 2020 from Sandra Wright, Town Clerk, regarding her notice of retirement. Her, her retirement will, her last day of work will be February 26th of 2021. And it, she writes that it has been her great honor and pleasure to serve the community. She has worked in the Town Clerk's office for over 34 years and for the last 11 years as the Town Clerk. And so we, again, appreciate all of her efforts as Town Clerk, and again, talk about leaving on a high note after this unprecedented 2020 election season. Item number 16 is an email dated November 17th, 2020 from State Representative Hannah Kane regarding the FY21 budget update. The House has passed its version of the FY21 budget, and under that budget, the town of Shrewsbury is to receive just over $20 million in Chapter 78 and about just under $3 million in unrestricted state aid for fiscal year 21. So right now, there are negotiations taking place between the House and the Senate with the governor to be able to sign that budget. And then item number 17 is a letter dated November 18th, 2020 from Kristen Lass, Assistant Town Manager, regarding schoolchildren and housing developments, October 2020. So that is it. If there is nothing else to come before the board in open session, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you very much, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.